Ed Franklin.
Deem McCary.
Sandra Kidman.
Desiree Fowler, Board Clerk, and we ask that we excuse Bob Candelaria, the Board President, tonight. And we also have our Superintendent Larry Wallens joining us and also his assistant Lynn Hoffman. So.
Thank you.
And also, moving along to Item B, Approval of the Agenda. Do we have a motion?
Our motion to approve the agenda.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. So, motion was made by Ed, second by Dee. Motion did pass. Agenda items, first on our agenda items is permission for a cross-country team to complete as sectionals on November 5th, 2020. Do we have a motion?
I recommend that we, as a board member, approve the request for the cross-country team to complete at the sectional.
Second?
I'll fucking it.
Mr. Ernie Robbers?
Thank you, Board Members, Mr. Wallens and Ms. Hoffman, for the opportunity to address you this evening. As you recall, it was probably about three months ago I came to you with not the greatest of tasks to ask you to cancel our fall season. And now I'm coming back to ask you to approve our cross-country boys' and girls' team to compete at the upcoming sectionals that are going to take place next Thursday down in Phoenix at Rose Mofford. It'll give them the opportunity to put a lot of the hard work that you approved to allow virtual coaching that our students have done. Right now, we have about 12 to 14 boys that have been working hard, that have put in some time and effort that will have the opportunity to vie for that varsity spot of seven students. And then we have five girls at this point, possibly another one or two that may be added in the future that have been working hard as well doing workouts. Coach Martin has been very valiant, has advocated very strongly for his cross-country runners to give them an opportunity. And we were very direct and very clear that once we returned back to school and we deemed it was safe for our students to return to in-person learning, we would revisit that. And so, Ms. Martin, our principal, and myself sat down about a week and a half ago, had a great discussion about what it would look like, whether or not we could meet the timeline, whether or not we had students that were prepared well enough to go down and compete and be competitive in their performances, what it would look like in regards to just the overall logistics. And so, once we returned, once all the green metrics were there, we deemed that they did have enough time, we deemed that they were going to, they had enough student athletes that continued to work out through this pandemic in a virtual manner and continue to run. In fact, we had some that actually independently entered into some races down in Phoenix and Mesa and up in Utah. Some won races. I know Rex Martin is one of those. I know that Trent Holliday and I believe her name is Jade Reed also entered races down in Mesa and they took second and fourth respectively. We had another five students that entered a race down in Phoenix. I don't know what their overall finishes were, but I know they were very competitive and had some great times. So, at this point, I'd like to come to you and ask for you to reinstate or give the opportunity for our cross-country team to compete at sectionals. And after they are able to compete at sectionals, if they finish in the top 17, then they will be given the opportunity to compete at state. If they don't finish in the top seven, then what happens is seven of the best times, in addition to the seven teams that qualify, will get the opportunity to compete in state. Do you have any questions or anything I'd like, that you'd like to share? You'd have me share with you?
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so what about liability by the school district? What did you discuss about that?
So, there is limited liability in the school district. There's a COVID-19 waiver that they have to sign in order to participate. There's waivers through the AIA. They also have to sign and participate. There's additional information, I register my athlete, that they have to go through and complete. There's the information that we provide to them as well. So, the liability will be no different than any other year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Board Members, does anyone else have any questions?
I have a question. I just want to know, how many schools will we be completing with?
So, I can't give you a direct question that to right now, to be honest. I know that the majority of the Division Three and Four schools, we're running Division Three for cross-country, and the northern schools for Division Three and Four will not be participating in that. So, there's 16 schools between Division Three, probably two-thirds of those are Division Four. And then I know some of the schools down in the Tucson area also won't be competing. So typically, there are, I believe there's four sections of about 16 teams. And so, those teams right now, there's about 12 in each section, 12 to 14. So, it's about 50 schools total that will vie for it. And once they get there, there's 28 schools that will have the opportunity to run for a state championship, if I'm doing my math correctly. So, there's about one-third, 25% to one-third of the schools that are not participating this fall.
Most of the rivers.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Most of the rivers, do you think that that low percentage is just because the COVID has started increasing a little bit? And I know it's only a very small number right now, but do you think that may be the reason?
So, the number of schools that are not participating are the same schools that made the decision early on not to participate. The schools in the Tucson area have chosen not to participate because they've chosen to do something amongst themselves. And so, they started the AIA calendar probably about four weeks later. We started in the middle of August, and these schools didn't start until September. And their, their fall season's actually going to go until mid-December. So, they're not even going to be with AIA for the majority of their sports down in Tucson. The schools up in the northeastern part of the state, primarily in the Navajo Nation or the Hopi or the Alche Se School District, they have chosen not to return back to school at earliest January. Some of those schools have opted out for the remainder of the school year. One of those in particular, which is Gannato, they will not return to sports at all this school year. Window Rock and then also Monument Valley have opted out until the earliest they would return to athletics would be March 5th. And then I had a meeting last week with those schools as well. And most of those schools at this point can't confirm one way or another whether they'll even return to school in January. If I were to guess, and if they were to guess, they would say the chances are a little bit higher that they would not return than they would return. And we're in a unique position and where we're a border school. More or less, we're similar to Holbrook. And I've talked to the Holbrook AD down there, and they've had some success. They actually chose to follow the AIA calendar this year. They've been able to do their competitions. They actually hosted a cross-country meet a couple of weeks ago in which they had nine teams and it was very successful. And as far as my knowledge goes, there's not been any COVID, positive COVID test.
Good, good. Thank you. I'm sure the kids will love that.
Yeah, they're very excited. We've got them out running. You know, we've got kids that are doing everything they can to get cleared. Academics, as you can imagine, have been a little bit of a struggle for some of our students being online. A lot of those students, especially some of our cross-country students, have started to attend our onsite services so they can get a little bit more attention here and also have started to attend some of the classrooms. So, we're seeing some good progress in some of their grades.
Question for you. So, parents are not going to be driving students, but it'll be our school district that will be providing transportation?
That's correct. So, at this point in time, we have the max amount of participants that would be going would be 14. Right now, that number sits closer to 12. And then we would have one or two coaches that would attend. We have made arrangements with the transportation to take a bus, not two vans, which typically we would take two vans. And so, the most we would have on a bus would be 16 individuals plus the driver. And if we take a yellow bus, one of the big buses, there's 28 seats. So, that would be easy enough to separate out. If we take a Spirit bus, which is a more comfortable buses, there's 23 seats. So, I mean, it's sets of seats. There's 46 seats in there, but there's 23 sets of seats. So, again, we could easily socially distance. There's safety protocols that we have in place. We're wearing masks to and from. And there's also protocols and modifications and recommendations that the AIA has put forward and which they're very strict on. I'm comfortable in sending them to sectionals because there are limited to no fans that will be attending. In fact, it's very discouraged for anybody to attend, just only athletes and coaches. And then at the state competition, there'll be less number of participating teams. They will give two wristbands for each athlete to attend. And so, two individuals that can support that student athlete will be able to go. And that will be it. They even went further to separate the divisions in different areas, different times. For example, next Thursday, our girls will run at 4:20 and our boys run at 5:30. And they're the ones that, and then there's nobody that runs prior to that. So, they basically clear out the whole park and then they bring in the next division. So, I'm very confident with David Shapiro, who has ran their cross-country in the state for a very long period of time, does an excellent job with his safety protocols. And they're both the sectionals. Sectionals will be ran at Ross Mumford, Ross Mumford Park, Rose Mumford Park down there. And then the other one's going to be ran in Gilbert is where we're tentatively scheduled at this point for the state competition.
Thank you, Ernie.
You're welcome.
Any, okay, so nobody has any questions? Mr. Wallens?
I didn't hear superintendents get to attend.
You know, if you have a AIA pass, there's no plus-one, but you can get yourself in. So, your wife might be a little disappointed.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's also helped to reduce the numbers. They just only allow one individual where normally it's a plus-one.
Good to know. Thank you for that information. Looks like we don't have any other comments, questions, so all in favor? All right, so it looks like we got four votes. Motion was made by Dee, second by Ed. Motion passed with four votes. Good luck, Page Cross Country Team.
We're super excited. And the one thing I didn't mention, and it was intentional, is our boys are defending six-time state champions. But that was not the decision. There was some of that that went into it, but it was all about safety and health for our students. And we feel like, at this point, we can get them down there safely and healthily and have them be able to compete.
Sounds great. Thank you so much, Mr. Robbers.
Thank you.
Moving along to Item B, Return to School COVID Update. We have a motion?
I make a motion for us to get the current status of COVID-19 from superintendent.
Do we have a second motion?
I'll fucking it.
Okay. Mr. Wallens?
Okay, Madam President and members of the Board. We have been in return for the past two weeks under a hybrid model. Hybrid means that we have remote and in-person. And so, we even took a step further when we had kids come back under the hybrid model two weeks ago and that we had only 50%. So, we created groups of students to come back so that we could maintain physical distancing and all those pieces. That has been very successful. We've got all of our protocols in place and everything working together. So, now we're requesting the Board to go to Hybrid 2.0. And Hybrid 2.0 means that all students can come back in person every day that they want to. Those who want to be in remote learning can do remote learning. And that's why it's called Hybrid, because you have both those elements. Wednesday would remain early release day and virtual cleaning day. And that, that gives us two days of students interacting with the facilities, a virtual cleaning day, and then two days of students interacting with virtual, with the, the facilities. And so, Wednesday is an ideal day to pick, to do that half-day release. And that's the day they would be virtual. So, students will be going from two days virtual, two days onsite, three days virtual, would be going to four days onsite, one day virtual or a half-a-day virtual. Based on our numbers, that's what we're requesting. That looks like that we would have about 15 kids or less in classrooms, depending on the class and that kind of stuff. We're running about 350 kids per site right now. And so, that's down from the 800 that are registered. So, we still have that group that's going to be virtual. So, we're requesting the Board to allow us to bring everybody back beginning November 2nd. And if the Board approves that tomorrow, we'll do email blast out to everybody and school messenger blast out saying, anyone can come to school online, in-person, whichever way you wanted to, get to school. And so, in the remote virtual piece, everybody would be with their grade-level teacher. We may be having to adjust teachers based on the number of kids who want to be virtual and the number of kids who want to be in-person. So, for example, if you have six teachers in third grade, we may indicate that two teachers may be virtual while the other four may be online or the other way around. We may need four online teachers for two, and then two teachers to do virtual. And that helps relieve some of the stress on our teachers who are doing both virtual and online. And I witnessed a class today that the teacher was doing virtual and online. And he feels like he's getting the hang of it now, slowly but surely. Six to 12 would be the same thing. Because we're offering virtual for those who are not ready to come back, we must also continue to offer onsite support. And so, those would continue to be available at each site. Sage and Sam would be there for those who want to get firmly into the virtual side of it and move forward with that. So, it's, it's really the epitome or the height of school choice. You get to choose if you want your kids to be virtual or in-person. The only thing that we would ask is that you stay with one or the other. And I know there's going to be circumstances where that may be difficult because if the student catches a cold, as an example, he could still participate virtually from home. So, there's different ways and new ways of looking at it because this is a totally new world for us and a totally new way of doing things. And we are capitalizing on that and doing the best that we can to make that work. So, basically, what we're asking the Board to approve is on Monday, everybody gets to come back that wants to. And those who want to remain virtual, continue to remain virtual. We no longer have the cohorting of groups, you know, half-going, one day or two days and a half-going, two days. So, we just want to bring everybody back that wants to come back. In terms of, I know Ms. McCary asked about the COVID updates, incidents. Right now, all of our chapters in our area are green. As of this afternoon, at 1:12 o'clock, we had a and actually a longer meeting with Navajo Nation Division of Education and the Office of Epidemiology. And President Nez also participated, along with Superintendent Gani, in the discussions about getting first priority is to get the most vulnerable kids back, those that are in special ed, those are, that have IEPs that are self-contained. Getting those kids back. And then the second priority is getting CTE kids back because they have to do so many lab hours in order to be proficient in their courses as a priority. But then anyone can come back who wants to and how the Navajo Nation is modifying that. I wish I had, had the foresight to tape President Nez's discussion because he talked about something that mirrored what I've been saying. This is here for a long time. He said, according to what he knows from Mr. Dr. Fauci, we may not have a virus till next April, May, June of '21. And so, we've got to look up and start looking at how we're going to get our kids educated because we are experiencing a phenomenal learning loss right now. Virtual is great. Virtual is awesome, but virtual is not standing in front of that teacher. And then the thing that I keep saying is, that's correct. And we're not going to take 2,200 Chromebooks and put them in the closet so that everybody can come back and be in the old ways. So, it's a no, 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 new, new environment. And so, that's what we're looking for, is to build forward. The question I'm starting to ask now is, what's January going to look like? What's next year going to look like? Because virtual is here to stay. How do we put all this together and make it work for everybody? So, that's what we're recommending, is that we, we go on November 2nd, bring everybody that wants to come back. Those that stay virtual can stay virtual.
Hey, Larry, I do like the idea of bringing all of them back. I do know that the cases in Arizona have started to incline a little bit, but we all know that out there. But I think making an optional type thing makes it very workable out there. So, I do like the recommendation.
Yes, and we also, we'll add to that, we have our COVID-19 specialist onboard, Peter Jones, who is just going around and checking everything and making sure everything is as perfect as we can make it in terms of mitigation strategies. He's hard at work every day. He's handling cases. And understand that the word is minimal spread. The word is not no spread. We know there's going to be possible, you know, something happen and we're going to be prepared to deal with that. One day, we had five students who had symptoms. And that triage team stepped in, took over. Those kids went to the appropriate sources, got themselves checked out. We're fine. And we're back in business again. And so, all those avenues are, will fail-tested now, and we know they work. We also sent out a letter yesterday, day before, to Lakeview because we did have one COVID-19 case there. It did not occur at school. It occurred at home. The young lady was, was on the Monday, Tuesday. She didn't know that she was positive until Friday. And so, again, we implemented all the protocols. We notified the whole school's parents. Normally, we only have to notify if the Kocanee account tells us. And I said, no, we're a small community. Let's just let everybody know that we had a case and move on with it. And so, parents can again make their own choices. Thank you.
Board Members, does anyone else have any questions?
I don't have a question, but we have a procedural matter we need to discuss.
Could you collaborate on that, please?
Oh, there was no motion made to allow kids to go back to school. The motion was just made to discuss. So, we need an actual action item?
Since I made that, I'll go ahead and motion to move the the hybrid two that was just presented by Mr. Wallens.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Does anyone else have any other questions, concerns? Mr. Wallens, I had the opportunity to visit Lakeview, wait, Page High School and Desert View on Thursday. And then also a chance to visit Page Middle School and Lakeview on Friday. So, it was unique to see how hybrid is working in the classroom at the different sites. But I also noticed that accountability on students' part, I mean, having cameras off and the participation was pretty interesting to see, but also seeing and recognizing the different sites also, how each teacher utilizes their, their, their students. For an example, I was at the high school in Mr. Belton's class. So, he had one student showing and I don't know what they were working on, but it was actually working with Skittles. And the student had her camera to the Skittles that she had on grouping them at her desk. And another student was just kind of doing something that was a little bit different. And so, there were three different options that the students were able to participate in that were learning virtually from home. And then also, I went to Desert View as well. And Desert View, the music teacher was pretty amazing. And I just thought that was neat, how he had his classroom set up as far as having a cart, an old TV stand cart and shifting that cart around, you know, getting the kids at home and the students that were currently in his room to participate. And then the other thing that I also notice is that our CTE classes, it is very, very interesting to see how that was also for students to be in the classroom and then also virtually. And then having to start onto different projects that may be coming up. And, and I also asked to look into orchestra. I know when my son was in the class for orchestra, one of his biggest concerns was how is this going to be able to work? But I was glad to see that Mrs. Hesse was able to help students with their instruments, tuning them there in the classroom. But I feel like the students at home are at a disadvantage as far as how, you know, if it is a first-year orchestra class. And then also at the Page Middle School, you know, there's different setups that I've also noticed. There's teachers that are using smart boards. And there's also one teacher that was using a TV. I didn't ask too much because the person was instructing, but he did in between his assignments. And he had a video showing, and he came to me and asked, you know, or kind of explained what he was doing. But I didn't, I didn't have, you know, too much time to ask. So, and then also, there are teachers that don't have those technology support in their classrooms. So, you know, they're stationed at their desks. And then at Lakeview, I noticed that one teacher didn't have a sub. So, students were having to come into, you know, into one classroom. So, I noticed that also with the kindergarten classes, they do have plastic dividers. And the one third grade, third-grade teacher that I went to visit also had clear dividers as well. I mean, with the, with that age group, you know, you have students that are taking their face masks off and then often reminded, please put your face mask back on. And also, mask break was something that I also got to see. And you know, just teachers being very, very creative when it comes to helping our students and reminding them and also getting them to get the wiggles out and, you know, running, getting them to run. And, and I know that recess is no longer in our, in our daily schedule, but there, you know, lunch, I've noticed, is a little bit different as well, too. So, thank you for that. And I am, I appreciate that I was able to, you know, get an insight of how our students are learning. But one of the things that I do want to mention is at the high school, I had asked to visit Mr. Begay's class. So, I came in right before break and the bell had rung. Well, I think the bell had rung and students were already coming into his class. But one of the unique things that I've noticed was one, one student of his walked in, "Mr. Begay, yahtzee, 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 yahtzee." You know, "How are you?" "Yahtzee, hello, Mr. Begay. How are you doing and what are you doing?" But the conversation continued in, in the native language. And that was very unique to see the connection that our teachers are able to make with our students. But at the same time, I do feel like Mr. Franklin had mentioned, the numbers are rising as well. And there are some safety protocols that I am very concerned about. So, one of my questions for you, Mr. Wallens, is how are we helping our teachers with technology support?
Well, we did that. If you remember, the Board had authorized 24 teachers to come back in July. And and learn how to do virtual lessons. And virtual lessons are not the same thing as teaching on the ground, face to face, as you saw. And so that's, that's one of the ways. So those teachers, those 24 teachers are now trainers of other teachers. And that's constantly going, uh, along. And remember, for all of us, including me, this is the first year. I'm back as a first year superintendent, they're back as a first year principal, first year, uh, teacher. Because we've never faced anything like this before. We've never faced anything like the virtual learning, the, the end, the end, uh, remote and virtual learning at the same time. And remote virtual learning at period. And like I said before, we're not going to take 2,300 Chromebooks and put them in the closet and say, oh, it's over now. We can all go back to being normal. Cause it's not going to be over. Uh, as I've told you before, I've seen articles that say we're going to be masking up for the next five years. Even when a vaccine comes out, it's going to go to the most needy first, then first responders. Eventually it'll work its way down to us. And, and that's a long ways off. It's not going to be the same, uh, and, and just instantly take place. So that's why I'm asking the question, starting to ask the question now. What's next year going to look like in terms of school? Because virtual is still going to be here and how do we get ready for that? So we're providing as much support as we can to teachers. It's an individual, uh, a growing experience to be able to do that. Uh, if you listened, I was on the radio Friday morning, uh, in an interview. And I talked about my teachers are, uh, 80% of our students are reporting online every day, at least that's what the attendance shows us. Uh, however, 60% of our kids are not making good grades on assignments. And that's what we need to change. This, yesterday I was in a conference call with about 30 superintendents from out of the state. The ending question in the conference call was, if you could do this over, if you could go back and start him in May again, what would you do differently? Well, the one thing that I would keep the same is the teachers who worked on the continuous learning plan, the teachers who came in and learned to do virtual learning, the teachers who became the tree trainer, trainers. But the one thing I would do differently, the one thing that I think I missed was educating parents on how to have kids in their classroom at home. Because we're now finding out that's a major issue. Assignments, as I said on the radio, you know, my teachers are hard at work, they're putting their hearts into this. And parents, I want you to understand, teachers get stressed out when kids don't do their homework, they don't do their assignments. So please create that learning environment space in your home or wherever you choose to do that, so that kids are focused and ready to learn. Uh, that is a critical piece and we want that assignment completion rate up. We want you, uh, go logging into power schools and checking on your kid every day that you can. And we want that environment set so that when the student is online, what you see behind him is okay. Not as I heard from one teacher, what he saw was the mom walked up behind her daughter and started making faces into the camera. No, that's not, this is school and we've got to create that whole environment. So I, we need a massive parent education program going out and saying, here's what it looks like. This is how it works. And I know I've, uh, talked to Ms. Kidman about that because I think she's got a great story to tell with kids in every, every building and, and the uniqueness of all that. So that we all have a good model to follow in terms of what that looks like in the classroom. But please, parents, reduce stress on my teachers by helping your students get their assignments in. That is absolutely critical. That will change the grades, that'll change the learning patterns. So please work on that. So that's the, the, the big picture. And every, you know, we have, um, the Arizona K-12 Center is hosting Saturday webinars. I sat in one all day Saturday, uh, several Saturdays back about how to do virtual classrooms. And I learned so much. Uh, I went through from about nine o'clock to three o'clock, learning how to organize a virtual classroom. Man, it was different. It was just different than what I, I've done as a teacher, as an English teacher, language arts teacher. So we're all learning, we're all in our first year. It just takes time for us to get better at it and become more proficient.
Can I, let's see. Now, as far as the safety, the cleaning and safety protocols, how will that increase or will that change? I mean, what are your input on that?
Well, it's constantly being monitored by Peter Jones, our COVID-19 specialist medic. Uh, we're constantly challenging those, uh, procedures and looking at them. He and I just attended a webinar, uh, last week, at the end of the week about air filters. Didn't even think about air filters and what those air filters need to look like, what the air circulation needs to be in the classroom and those kinds of things. So every day we're learning more, as more information comes down to us, we're making modifications in those procedures. But right now we believe that we have actually the safest environment. We have the safest environment that it can be for students. Please understand something that's I think important. Kids come to us with not feeling well or a temperature or having been exposed. We don't have a closet over here that's, that's got these little COVID-19 pills that we just sneak and give a kid. It comes to us. And so the important thing is how we respond when we detect it. When I come to work every morning, first place I stop at the reception desk and get my temperature taken before I even go into my office. And I record it in my log as I, as all employees are required to do, so that I have that record. So it's important that we have our strategies in place. We have our triage teams at every grade, at every building, ready to move and respond when there's a, uh, a kid who has a temperature or is not feeling well, uh, has COVID-like symptoms. And then that's a key word is COVID-like symptoms. Uh, and that we're able to respond, get the parents in, and it's, uh, those procedures are working great. And then when, uh, the information comes out, we notify, uh, the parents of the kids in that school that, that, that's what we're doing. Uh, one of the things that President Nez talked about today in his presentation was, uh, the word exposure. Be very careful about how you use the word exposure. For example, he said, the office of the controller of the Navo Nation, uh, was all of a sudden shut down for two days because a person of a person of a person of a person thought they were exposed. And five people back doesn't mean that that office should have been closed, but it was. And it created great problems for the Navo Nation because that's where everything, you know, all, all the money comes out of and everything. And so we are very careful about how we handle that. That's why as soon as something, uh, keys, a response, Peter is right there. Terry Mauer, HR Director is right there if it's an adult. And we're ready to move forward and ready to move on helping that student.
I want to mention that each student that is doing the hybrid, when I was at the high school and also, well, actually all four schools. Um, before a student enters a classroom, they are given this, well, with the lower class, they're given a squirt of hand sanitizer. And then the middle school and high school are required to get a squirt of hand sanitizer as well. And then also that when the student leaves the classroom, they're also asked to use hand sanitizer. And then I believe that the high school between or after, um, each break, the teacher closes to the doors, exiting doors, wipe the doors down as well on the inside and the outside. So that's just what I was informed about some of the cleaning procedure.
Did you see the, the markings on the floor so that they, everyone goes in the same direction? Depending on which side of the hallway they're on?
Yes, and I believe it was the hot, Lakeview and Desert View as well. They don't have a, a solid line, it's a pretty much, yep, a rip line. And each student has to stand on a, on one of the tape markings so that they're spread out socially distancing while they are waiting in line.
And that is, that, those are the powerful techniques that we have in place to protect students. And that's why it's the safest place in the world is right now in our schools. They're not, kids are not even having that kind of safety at home. Uh, and I know there's issues now coming out of, of, um, IHS and, uh, the Navo Nation Epidemiology Center regarding uh, family structure and how sometimes that, that, uh, contact gets into the, you know, the brothers and sisters and then just spreads rapidly through because someone didn't follow those procedures. And so we believe by having all this in place that we're making a big difference in, in the lives of our students. And that's why we want to get as many back to school as we can, so that we can move forward.
And after meeting with, um, the transportation director as well, I asked about the different bus routes that are running for schools, primarily for school meals, delivering school meals and then also bringing students Monday and Tuesdays. And then versus Thursday, Friday. So our Mondays and Tuesdays sounds like, and even with each of our schools, that there is a low, um, attendance.
The numbers were just low for Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah, so there's
Thursday and Friday is higher.
Yes, much higher. So some of the questions that I have also asked was that, um, let's see, you know, how these bus drivers are able to, you know, run the school meals and then also how we're able to utilize our bus drivers as well to pick up students and just the safety precaution, um, protocols and all that in place. So I really did appreciate my time with, um, Holley at the bus barn. And I also met with Art as well, too. And he did give me some breakdown as far as the meals that are being provided. And he said that there are more people utilizing the meal service as well, too.
Yeah, in September, 32,000 meals were served by Art and his team. October is going to be even more. And most importantly, we've been approved for the, the same, um, program status that we can serve any, any person under 18. We can serve them breakfast and lunch, and then on Friday they serve also meals for the weekend. They don't have to be a student of Page High School, Page Middle School. They can be just a young person. And I know, uh, in the chapter meeting I was in with Kaibato, uh, the other day, the, uh, Kaibato Boarding School, they're still under the summer feeding restrictions. So they could only feed their students at Kaibato Boarding School. And I, uh, shared with them that, let us know, we can bring food out to any person who's under 18 and will be glad to help serve all the kids in that community while they get, they're waiting for their approvals from the BIE to get to the, this, and Chantel is the same thing, getting to that summer, that, that program status where you can serve anyone, any child under 18.
Can I also collaborate on the Lakeview OSS room? I thought that was very phenomenal to see that the teachers and the, um, specials teachers, is that what you want to call them, the librarian and the computer aide there was able to get, um, students? And that is a while scheduled that they have. So each individual uh, teacher in there is taken or paraprofessional is taking students out. And it is by grade level and depending on which is it, um, group they're with. So they're constantly taking students out, bringing them back in and getting them where they need to be. If they are doing hybrid, um, specials. And then also meal service was pretty unique. I didn't know that the on sites were also doing, serving hot meals as well, too. So that was pretty unique. But what I thought was very unique for OSS at Lakeview was that each student had their own little cubby with all of their school supplies that were in the cobbies. And of course they have their names on it. And then also not just their tablets there, but also a charging station. I've noticed that in a lot of the classrooms and oh, there was extra work that was available to the K2 group. So just kind of interesting to see that each school, their school is doing their very best and doing the best that they can to help students to be successful with the hybrid. Sorry.
And that's why we think it's important to bring everybody back and let them participate if they choose to.
Do we have a count of how many students are attending on Mondays and Tuesdays versus Thursdays and Fridays?
On Mondays and Tuesdays, it's about 350. On Thursdays and Fridays is about 500. And it depends on the week, this week probably was lighter because of the, it was cold. And there was some snow.
Okay, well, that's all I have to say. Any other questions, concerns? All right, all in favor? So yeah, three. And I'm going to abstain to this. So the motion was made by Dee, second by Sandra, three, um, votes, well, three in favor, so the motion passed.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Why are you abstaining instead of voting no?
Of saying it, well, wait, that would be a no for me, I'm sorry. It would be a no vote for me.
Okay.
Now, I appreciate that all the teachers are doing their very best, but the thing is, again, I still have our concerns for our communities and the surrounding communities and with the numbers rising. Any other questions? Okay. So we are at the end of our agenda and we are during, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye. We are during this meeting at 5:52 PM. Hey, moving along to ours. Next agenda, let's see. Our governing board work study session. When I need to I call this meeting to order at 5:53 PM. Can, let's see, no, okay, can I get a roll call, please?
Ed Franklin.
Dean McCary.
Sandra Kidman.
Desiree Fowler, and we ask that we excuse Bob Candelaria, who couldn't be here with us tonight. And also joining us is Larry Wallens and his assistant Lynn Hoffman. Moving along to item two, work study session. Board self-evaluation. I'd like to table this agenda item to November study session so that Bob is included in the conversation and his presence would be definitely appreciated.
Desiree, that would be the, um, November regular board meeting.
Oh, November regular board meeting? Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'll second that motion.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, so all in favor, say aye. Aye. Dee? Motion was made by myself, Desiree, second by Sandra, motion passed. So that will be at the November board meeting. Moving along to item B, superintendent's evaluation process. And this is just a discussion, board members? Or sorry, Mr. Wallens?
Madam President, members of the board, what I was, um, wanted to do was take my valuation, just like yours, and put it onto a survey form that will be submitted to all of you. And then we would have the results back and look at that way rather than doing it by hand. If that's okay. That's really it, all, unless you have a change to the items on the, on the survey. It covers, um, information provided to the board, materials and background. Board questions, policy involvement, board development, district image, communication with community, media relations. district image, communication with community, media relations, approachability, internal communications, personal matter, personnel matters, sorry, delegation of duties, recruitment, visibility, board development and maintenance, budget reports, facility maintenance, management, resource allocation, professional knowledge, self-improvement, focus on students, goal development, staff development, curriculum, and then goals. Focuses on all those, gives questions in all those areas. And so we would, just like we did with your evaluation, we digitize it and get it through a survey form. That way the results will come back compiled for us, if that's okay with the board.
I like the idea myself.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Wallens. Moving along to item C, district newsletter article. And that is a discussion, Mr. Ed Franklin.
I know everybody have a copy of the, the, the short letter that I, I prepared to put in there. And this was just my vision about how, you know, in order to make certain things happen. It takes only, not only the board, with a great leadership from the superintendent, but also it takes that support given to the teachers in order to make these things happen. And I sincerely believe with the way this year has started out and the leadership that I have seen, started from the top all the way down, is that we have the potential to, to see significant changes, I believe, within the next year to come. And I think in order to make sure that happens, we have to stay, stay focused. And that's the only thing I will say in here. I, I believe we have a great opportunity. We have a great future. I believe we have put great things and programs in place to make that happen. Anyone is welcome to, if they see something that they would like to modify or change to it. I'm, I'm, I'm happy with that. Won't, won't be offended. I just wanted to give a little bit of my vision. And I sincerely believe with the leadership we have with Larry now, that great things are, are bound to happen.
Thank you, Ed. Does anybody have any questions?
We also need to address who's going to be doing the next article. Ed's, Ed's role will be in the November newsletter and then looking for who will be creating the article for the December newsletter. And that person will need to be prepared, I guess, to share that out to it, the November 10th meeting, since there is no study sessions in November.
Do we have a volunteer that is willing to write a newsletter for the December Page and High School District Newsletter? I would like to solely volunteer Bob Candelaria.
He already did his.
Yes.
There's someone looking up that needs to volunteer there. There's an S and a K, I think it is.
What are you talking about?
Just a little side comment there. I think you've got a great story to tell and I'm just so excited to, to, to be able to read it.
Elaborate.
As I said before, one of the questions that was asked of me this morning was, what would I do differently? If, if I could do it all over again? And it's parent education, parent education on that virtual environment. You and I've had several conversations and you've just given me such tremendous insights. And I think those insights will be valuable to all the parents in our communities. And the uniqueness of having one child at every school brings its own challenges. And I think you've got such a great story to tell. It would be awesome to put that out there and, and help train the parents on how to do this.
So you are wanting me to volunteer to write an article about
Being a mom.
Classroom, power schools.
Being a mom, being a mom in a virtual environment. That could be your title, being a mom in a virtual environment.
Boy, that sounds so good, Sandra.
See, I already got a title for you.
Sandra, I'm telling you, woo.
And I'll be glad to help you lay it out.
Okay, I guess I'm volunteering.
I will volunteer to do the January newsletter. And Dee, it looks like you'll be doing February? Okay, perfect. So we have a list of names for a list of months and I'm excited about January. I'm hoping some good things comes out. Oh, I'm sorry, I forget, I'm running the show here. Any other questions, concerns? Awesome. So moving along to item three, adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, all those in favor to adjourn at 6:02, please raise your hand. Awesome. Motion was made by Ed, second by Dee, motion passed and we are done. Have a great evening, everyone.